Brandon Board of Education meeting is ordered. Can I have a roll call, please?
Sarah Ellen. Dr. Truchert here.
Here.
Melissa Clark here. Maryann Dwyer. Ms. Kevina, absent with notice. Kevin McCallum, absent with notice. Dr. Outlaw. Jan Meeke, absent without notice. Dr. Davis. Student Representative Jeff Harris.
Here.
Student Representative Brennan Baldwin.
Here.
Student Representative River Jean Jeanette.
Here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Okay, stand before, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Okay, first on our agenda, for the first time this year, is our Brandon High School student report. Coming up, gentlemen. Go ahead and introduce yourself again, so, because I know we are here.
So, we're all from Brandon Student Council. I'm Brennan Baldwin.
I'm Jeff Harris.
I'm River Jeanette.
Alright, so our president today couldn't make it due to a volleyball game.
So, on the first day, we did a little, it was a little different than normal. We began with the pep assembly beginning of the day. And then, for the remainder of the hours, we worked on relationships and goals, opposed to normal. Like jumping right into syllabus and things like that.
So, this year, we introduced a seminar in the high school, which I'm sure you guys all know, which, uh, they take place on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And they put a mix of all four classes together, so like, we don't just have seniors and one summer. We've got freshmen through seniors. So, you get a good mixture of meeting new people and getting everyone there. It also gives us time to discuss different topics, choose school activities, and if nothing else, extra time to work. So, in this class time, we're getting a lot of different things. Like, we discuss things like vaping epidemic, phone usage, things like that. So, you get a lot of, uh, students and teachers in the server that talk about things. If they don't have something to do that day, students save a lot of time to work on their classes.
So, as a student council as a whole, we're, like, last few months, we're, we're, ah, I'm sorry. We're required to work on homecoming dance, spirit week, core performance, the homecoming parade, and pep assembly.
So, for our dance, our dance was overall pretty successful this year. We sold over 500 tickets. And we had a ton of positive feedback over our DJ and our decorations. And our theme was Alice in Wonderland. And, yeah, so, all went pretty well.
You can see, if you go back to some, I'm sorry. On the decorations, you've got, like, it went really well. I think a lot of people enjoyed it. We've got, uh, that Alice in Wonderland theme, most likely, car thing. And then, Alice in Wonderland. So, for our, we had our halftime core performance at halftime of the football game, pretty usual. It went really smoothly. We didn't have any problems with that. Uh, we awarded our king and queen, Ken and Early and Asiana Matia.
And our homecoming parade, that was a highlight, too. It was really well organized. We had a huge turnout. There were just a ton of new clubs and organizations, like the mountain biking team. That was a new club this year. They got introduced.
So, for our spirit week this year, our participation, like, throughout the whole school, increased a lot from last year. And, at, like, football games and things like that, we've been taking spirit points during the first quarter. And, before the game as well. And, I think overall, our participation has gone up a lot. And it makes a way, or a lot more fun environment for everyone at the games and during school.
Participation has been a really big goal for the whole student council this year. Just, we've definitely been lacking in the past a little bit, the past few years, in overall, like, spirit participation, attendance at games, things which want to increase a lot. So, we have a, in the community, you see a big student section and things like that. It's something that you want to see. So, we've been working a lot on that. We've got a lot of increase in the positive. And lastly, we want to talk a little bit about our student section. It's called the Hawks Nest. It's been, like, a very, very involved year, which is part of that spirit. The best attendance and participation in years. We've heard nothing but positive feedback from the school community and lots of other schools. We've gotten, we've put a few compliments on that. So, we're pretty happy about that. It's one of our highlights about student council.
Okay, I'll tell you, I'm a Friday Night Lights fan. And I was watching it with my husband this summer. And I'm like, I want that, I want that. And I bugged him out, and I bugged the department. So, I'm like, please, let's get our student election filler this year. Previous years, it's a little quiet. And so, this year has been phenomenal. Friday night, I'm freezing, sitting there. And I look over, and you're all pink and cheering, and I'm going crazy. So, thank you.
We recently went to, like, a pep assembly meeting for all the student councils. And we were sitting next to Gilrich and, like, a couple other schools. And they're, like, we're, like, talking about our student section. Like, I'm really talking to them.
It just adds so much gaiety of you guys up there, just so, just participating.
Well, the cool thing about it is you're getting the middle school jived up, because now there's, like, a little middle school section that's one. And they all have, like, their pictures, and, you know, they're super pumped. So, thank you for being awesome role models, because you're gonna have them in your school next year. So, it's awesome.
That concludes it. Thank you, if all we had on you.
I didn't know that was a conclusion. I was gonna say, fine for the end. Do you have a Hawks Nest at all the other sports, too? Like, do you do it at basketball, at the volleyball, at softball?
It kind of, like, it's not, I guess it's not as, like, official as it is for football games, but, like, when students come, we kind of all just are sitting in one area. And so, we're all kind of cheering each other on. So, yeah, I guess.
Football's definitely our largest, but I think basketball this year is another big one. We get a lot of people asked. We're gonna try and really increase that. Because I know we've struggled with basketball times before, so we're gonna try and.
And soccer was another, right?
Yeah, we have soccer.
Yeah, soccer's been, soccer's been pretty good, isn't it?
We always have, like, the fan love. Time to do the research and things, so that always goes.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We'll see you throughout the year.
Yeah.
You need me to?
Okay, next on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. So, I'm gonna start off, I'm gonna pass the, uh, page right over to Diane Zedan. She is gonna introduce someone who's kind of new. Not really, officially new. Uh, we've got Amanda Miller officially joining the team here, so. Amanda, go ahead. Go ahead, Diane.
So, um, I'm happy to introduce Amanda Miller. She, um, last year, I was contracted three days a week. And, uh, this year, we're able to hire her full-time as a psychologist. And part of her duties is intervention, um, at Harvey Swanson. And then, the other psychologist, Caitlin, will be doing intervention over at Hopeless. So, we're building our, um, support team in the elementaries. And, uh, happy to have her here and her kids go to our schools. And, uh, so, yeah, thank you.
Welcome, Amanda. Tell us a little about yourself.
I graduated from University of Detroit Mercy in May. So, last year, I completed my internship here. I left for a couple months beginning of the school year. And I was texting Diane, like, I wanna come back to Brandon. It's such a great place to be. So, I'm happy to be back. My kids go to Harvey Swanson, so it's nice.
And Shelby, she did, she sent a letter saying, I want to come back. I want that to get stopped. The message that I come back, yes. Any questions, anybody? Hey, thank you very much. Welcome.
Next up, I'm very excited about this. As we know, we've talked a lot about, um, trying to get, um, our program on construction trades, um, going. And, uh, we're very patient. We have the right person in leadership. And, um, we found our person last year. Eric Swanson's done an absolutely remarkable job in this program. So much buzz and excitement around the district about woodworking. So, um, I'm gonna be quiet now and let him share some of his excitement. And let his students share some of the projects that they're having. So, Mr. Swanson.
Appreciate you having us here today. Um, you'll see in the pictures, um, they kind of speak more than what I can say about the program itself. This is El Schmontz, and this is Anthony Travato, and Dylan Garrison. They're each in three different classes that we teach, um, in the district. So, I kind of split my time between the high school and the middle school, teaching different woodworking design classes, a tiny house class, and then seventh and eighth grade wood shop. So, we're just kind of trying to have fun and, um, learn how to learn from our mistakes. There's one thing I wanted to bring to, um, the woodworking program and the building trade program, is that you're gonna make mistakes. And that's not just part of being a human being in life, but it's part of doing this. And the cool thing is, you learn so much when you do that. And wood is a really nice medium, because, you know, it's dead. And, um, it's fixable most of the times. And, uh, when we make little things, it tends to be actually pretty inexpensive, um, anyway. So, Alice is actually just gonna start. She actually brought, we actually brought a sign we made for the board. This is going to be one of our future projects. They're gonna make signs and learn how to route them with routers and things like that. So, it's just an example that we brought for the board, um, to kind of represent something we're gonna do later on in the year, so.
Thank you, Alice. That is, like, really sharp. Oh, my gosh, that's really nice. So, everybody can see it. This is, like, really nice.
I'm so pleased.
Yep, and it's got the, the hooks all ready to hang it up. Thank you. And you're in which grade?
I'm 11th grade.
11th grade, and, oh, my god, very nice.
So, Alice is just gonna tell about her class real quick. Just share a couple things.
So, like I said, I was in 11th grade, or I am in 11th grade. And I'm in Mr. Swanson's wood shop. Woodworking one class, okay. And our first task in the whole class was to make something entirely out of hand. So, no machines or anything like that. And, like, at first, I was like, okay, I got this. But it turned out to be, like, way harder than I thought it would be. Like, I had no idea. So, I made a spoon, and other people made other utensils, like spatulas. And they, some of them turned out really, really nice. To get to here, it probably took me, like, seven different pieces of wood. I cut sanding in half and stuff, so. It's very stressful, but, like, once you get the hang of it, and, like, once you understand that you stay patient with yourself and, like, work slow, you really start to get the hang of it. And it's, like, really kind of nice and fun and relaxing after you figure it out. Um, the next project we're working on is cutting boards. I know a lot of people are making, like, uh, Michigan-shaped cutting boards, which I think is kind of cool. I just chose to make a rectangle cutting board for my first one. So, because, like, I want to kind of get the hang of it first, before I kind of go on something like this. And then, after the cutting boards, we're going to make shoes for the kindergartners. And we're going to invite them over into our wood shop. And we're gonna teach them how to tie shoes. And we're gonna let them decorate them. We're gonna have snacks and, like, we book to them. I think it's gonna be, like, really fun.
They don't want to buy.
Do you guys want to see these, like, a picture?
Yes.
And if you ask anybody in my second hour wood shop class, and there's a lot of students, and they'll ask, who's the best woodworker in the class? They will point to Alice. Because she is, she's learned how to be patient and forgive herself and kind of grow from that.
Allison, are you, are you thinking that you would want to do this as a career? Or is this gonna be a side job? Or what do you think?
I definitely think I would go into this as a hobby, just because it's really relaxing. And, I don't know, it's definitely something I'd like to do. Like, I was gonna do, like, in art class, like, painting or jewelry or something. But, like, I'm so glad I got put into this wood shop request, because it's, like, completely different experience than just staying in a regular painting art class. So, I'm pretty excited about it.
Okay, thank you. Very nice, Jonathan.
Okay, this is Anthony Travato from the middle school. He's gonna tell you about his first project and about his class.
Hi, Anthony.
So, for our first project, we could choose whatever we wanted. So, people made, like, cutting boards, cornhole, and a whole bunch of things. I made a mini pup, of course. So, I thought it was really cool, and I liked it. So, it, I originally started out with a design that I thought I could do. But it turns out it's harder than I thought. I ended up cutting some obstacles down, but I think I did pretty good. Once we were finished, me and my friend, uh, went to go to Mr. Tucker's office to challenge him to the mini pup fight. And, uh, well, he did good on my friends, but mine struggled.
Very good. Thank you, Anthony.
And then, lastly, I'd like to introduce Dylan Garrison. Dylan's in our third hour tiny house construction class. He's gonna say a few words, but then he and Kane Plitzenell have put together a short video on their own. They've been filming since the first day of class, on their own, on their free time, editing on lunchtime, in their free hours, to make the video to show the tiny house from start to finish. And I can't say enough about what Dylan's done this time. He still is working and building walls, but then he grabs a camera and films, and then goes and edits it while he's eating lunch. So, my Dylan.
Hi, Dylan.
Hi, uh, I'm in Mr. Swanson's tiny house business. And, uh, you know, like you said, we've been doing a lot of work as, you know, a team, you know? And it's been a lot of fun, because it's been us independently working on it, you know? How we're running the classes. He's just watching, you know? He's letting us take lead, which is a, it's a very, you know, and it, like, it makes you feel good, you know, to be able to independently do something while he's just standing to make sure you're safe. And that's a very nice thing to have. And, uh, you know, it's, it's great to have as a team. You're all working hard to make sure that everything's going well. And I just can't be thankful enough to be in the class. It leads to a great career for a lot of us, so.
How many are in the class, so to speak?
I actually don't know. What is it, like, uh, 32 people?
That's nice.
So, it's a very big class. You know, we have to split ourselves into little groups, make sure that we can get the jobs done efficiently, you know? And we have group leaders, because there's a lot of kids who go to talk to Mr. Swanson, and I'm sure he doesn't want to be overwhelmed by, like, all coming to him with all little problems, because we're all very inexperienced. So, he's been a great help in leading the class. So, it's a benefit of this family. If I could show the video, it'd definitely be nice.
So, the students have really kind of made it happen, you know? And, and, and Dylan's right, they've really taken the lead on it. Not just in tiny house classes, but all the classes. Take chances and do things wrong, screw up, and keep working. So, proud to work with them, and it's a nice group of kids. So, we appreciate you having us today and, uh, for your time.
Anybody got any questions?
How far are you on the tiny house later?
Oh, we are moving, you know, that, that bit.
You have, like, walls of this way?
Yeah, we've got, we've got the front wall already standing up. You'd think that we're going real slow for a bunch of kids, but, you know? We are making some very good progress, and thanks to this guy, you know, teaching us what we need to know.
Do we have the inside designed already, too?
Yeah, uh, we had, that was, like, the first thing that we had to do, was make sure that everything was planned out very, very nicely. And he, he would not let anything slide. He had to make sure, you know, this is someone's gonna live in there, so it has to be nice, you know? So, he went through, you know, what the interior should look like.
We should be in the homecoming parade. And, and the items being made, are, are rumored there may be a sale? Or what are we thinking?
So, we were thinking about doing a, a little craft show before Christmas. So, students like Alice and Anthony and, uh, and Dylan here can actually sell some of the things that they've made, some of those cutting boards, thanks to the community, and the teachers and people. Number one, that kind of, you know, get the community together, but, um, help fund the program, but also just, um, have them recognize that, like, they've been doing really good stuff.
I saw the wood. I mean, it seemed like a different kind of wood. Are, do you have, do you look for wood donations? Or what do you, I mean, don't want anybody just dropping off the tree pieces there?
Yeah, so, when I took over the program, there was a lot of, um, wood there, ready to use.
Oh, okay.
And we've been, been pretty efficient with it. But, of course, I would never turn down sponsors or donations to the program. But, uh, you know, those are things that we kind of order, kind of at the beginning of the year, and just kind of comes to fly.
I have to say, I think the whole goal for the district is to get that spark in a kid. And every single one of these kids have it because of you and the program. And it gives me chills, and, you know, if they all have it, I can imagine the rest of the kids, too. So, thank yous.
Keep up the good work. Next, uh, any public comments or questions on agenda business, or extractives? Okay, none? Okay, so, next on our agenda, we have the approval of consent agenda. Should I have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Information and discussion items, uh, Board of Education Committee report. Is anybody from policy here? I don't remember about you. Just, please, just leave something. Is there anybody else who wants? Emma? Oh, okay. Well, we do have a motion. Okay, we do have a motion coming up about rewording of one of the policies that we voted on. Basically, we are just, uh, conforming with what the law really now is. The wording wasn't not proper. So, we have that all cleaned up. Uh, anybody else?
I was just about to give that message, which is awesome.
Okay, yeah, then, uh, would, you want to expand a little more on that?
Diane, um, Dr. Outlaw, and I went to Lansing, um, and met with, um, Coach Williams and, uh, the, the, the MEASB. And, uh, it was probably one of the most informative, it wasn't training, but as far as all the training that I've done for school work, so, or I think I learned more that day than I have in, in the, the previous, uh, uh, these events that they've held. So, it was great, and I think we have a lot that we can do and push at state level.
And, and I agree. I actually thought the panel, they had representatives just answered questions, which I thought was nice, but also hearing from, uh, the districts around the state that was very eye-opening. So, uh, that was very good. Okay, next, education report, Dr. Davis.
Absolutely. I'll just make it short and sweet from here, if that's okay. I think Sarah nailed it, she said, you can see the spark throughout the district. It has been an absolutely amazing first nine weeks of the school year so far. First market period wraps up next week, and that spark is truly everywhere. Every building, every classroom, every staff member, everybody's out there working extremely hard. We're doing other things on the side right now, but I don't want to steal the, the thunder from what we just saw and take away from that. That's what it's all about. So, next month, when we come back, we'll have NWA scores to report out for you. We'll be wrapping that up for the, uh, first time this year. And, um, I'll share some of the other things, really, with the curriculum and instruction. But right now, it's just focusing on the magic that's happening.
Thank you.
And the market period is number first.
We can write it, I'm casey.
Going fast. Oh, my gosh. Okay, next, our action items. Could I have a motion to approve the Brandon Board of Education BEA agreement?
The Brandon Board of Education or the BEA?
Okay, support, okay, any discussion?
Uh, excited to have a positive agreement with our teachers' union again. Teachers are beginning to step, 2% on schedule. And there's also an increase in our coaches' salaries. We need to, uh, um, do some work there to, uh, give them, retain some of our coaches. So, anyway, I'm very excited about it, and, um, happy to have an agreement with their group. We value our teachers.
Absolutely.
As a district.
All those in favor say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Could I get a motion, please, to do an extension of the Brandon Administrator Association contract?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the amendment of the expiration date for the BAA contract from October 21st, 2019, to November 30th, 2019, as presented.
Support.
Any discussion on that?
This is a one month of extension of exactly what we currently have. There's no change. It's extending it one month while we continue negotiating.
All those in favor say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Uh, could I get a motion to approve the 2019 bond refunding resolution?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the 2019 bond refunding resolution as presented.
So, uh, we heard from this during the work session. I think the important thing, this was basically refinancing the bond, and we're saving $2.7 million for taxpayers by the end of this.
And, and we voted yes on this in August, but now the bonds got sold, so the resolution never.
Correct. Let's do except the sale of bonds.
Yep. Okay, I'll lead a roll call, go, please.
Sarah Ellen?
Yes.
John Truchert here?
Yes.
Melissa Clark?
Yes.
Brandon Dwyer?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Motion passes, all five yeses. Could I get a motion to adopt the revised policy of 24-10 that prohibits referral or assistance?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve revised policy 24-10 prohibiting referral or assistance as presented. Support.
I didn't just talk about that.
Yep, I just talked about it. We just performed it with the law and fixed it up, done the cleaning up of some words that no longer really resonate as well. Okay, any, all those in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Approval of the student council overnight trip. Or, or?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the high school student council ordered a trip to the YMCA Camp Hopeless paddock, November 4th, 5th, 2019, as presented.
Any discussion on that?
Mr. Stevens, anything that you wanted to share on the trip?
No, this is just a trip that they go on every year to build that team leadership, team building. They bring that stuff back to the high school. And this year, we're excited, because they bring that stuff back to our seminar classes and literally share with our whole school. So, we're excited about it.
Oh, good.
Is it just the Brandon, or is it any other student councils that are leading them? Or is it just our student council?
I believe this one is just us.
We're from student councils, just us.
Okay. Any other questions, since we got the real student council here? Okay. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes, you're going. Okay. Approval of appointment of our school psychologists.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the employment of Amanda Miller as the new school psychologist for the 2019-20 school year as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on that? We met her earlier. Okay, all those in favor say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes, she's hired. Approval of preliminary qualification application of bonds.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve preliminary qualification application of bonds for March of 2020 as presented.
Support.
Okay, and then, this is just the application that we're submitting to Treasury. Okay, any discussion? I know we talked about a workshop. None? Okay, all those in favor say yes. Yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Approval of the board meeting. Approval of the board meeting dates.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the dates added to the 2019 slash 20, Brandon Board of Education rank the meeting schedule as presented. So February 10th, 2020, March 16th, 2020, April 20th, 2020, May 18th, 2020, and June 15th, 2020, as presented.
Any discussion, just that we shifted the two to the second week?
That's a holiday. January is that the word was the second week? That's a holiday.
All those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed say no. Okay, motion passes. Okay, now we're at citizens input. Dr. Wong's gonna check. I just have a quick comment, because it made me think about it when they mentioned they're gonna do the shoes for the kindergartners. When I was at Harvey Swanson, I did go to their feature earlier this week or last week. And they, the, last time I went to the middle school, I don't know, Dan Stevens, Dan, did the middle school band walk the, no, no, it's coming up Halloween.
They're doing a Halloween, a high school band, it's gonna be.
Is it the high school? Okay. I think it's so cool that we're seeing the upper element or upper schools coming down to the lower and seeing that interaction. I, they were, the PTA board was so excited about hearing that. So, yeah, on Halloween, the Harvey Swanson kids all dressed up in gray through the town, so that's really cool. So you'll have to get that, go and show me. Okay, if, since there are no other citizens input, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.